Call the business meeting for the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County for Tuesday, October 15th to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation led by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, please guide us tonight to make wise decisions as we handle the people's business of Jackson County. Please make sure that all those in attendance and the members of this board reach home safely. In your name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell. Chairman Shatwell.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved.
Support.
Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the Board. Any communications and petitions may be presented to the Clerk at this time. Seeing none, special orders nor public hearings this evening, we have arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the Board. You may only address the Board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open.
Good evening, Board members and everybody in the audience here. My name is John Hart. I am from, I live in Jackson at 410 Garfield. I'm here just to speak to you about the JDL Millage that's coming up, and I'm the co-chair of that body. And I just wanted to encourage everybody in the audience to vote yes. This is just a continuation of the current millage, and this millage supports the operations of the library to 90% of the millage operations every year. So it supports this, the library, the most. You can see all the things that have happened at the library. They've kept renovating different branches. They've increased their electronic services. They've updated their books. They listen to the community, and they want the community to be able to use their system to get information of all kind. On a home that's $130,000 a year, the taxable part of this millage is $130. That gets you, that's basically $10 a month, and if you look at the services of the library, they're overwhelmingly positive in the community. So I just want to let people know that they can visit votyesjdl.org, and they can look at the different materials there, and they can also reference all the things that the library has put out on their own. And if people are interested in participating, they can come and get a sign, or they can ask, we could ask people to donate so we can make sure that this passes. So the library for me when I was a youth and even as a community member now has been extremely important. I call it the working person's university. If you want to go learn things there, if you want to have access to the Internet, if you want to find all kinds of information, the library is our treasure chest and our trove for our community. Also, they've been a great partner in all the different roles that I've worked in the community, and they're a partner that can depend on, and they have great professional staff that can deliver great outcomes. So any loss of operation of the library, I think would be a great loss to the community. The return on everything is so high, and I just really encourage everyone to go check out all the offerings of the library and go to the libraries if they have not been there. They will be surprised. Last thing I want to say is just by, if you look at books in Jackson, in Jackson County, there are no new bookstores. The only way that you can really browse a new book is to go to Target, or Walmart, or Meyer. So without the library's access to literacy, a lot of us, that's just the only place that we could go, and then you have to purchase there. So I deeply encourage you to look into all that this covers and to support this millage because I think that the library is one of our foundational needed elements. Thank you and have a great evening.
By the entry door today, I placed, on the table, I placed a fundraiser for the Center for Women. I learned recently about that organization, so their fundraiser, they'll take your change, your dollar bills, a check. There's a scan code if you want to make an electronic fund transfer. So if anybody feels so inclined to make a donation to the Center for Women, thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brenda Abbey. I do have a small question because we are talking about millages, and we have a lot of seniors out there, they're going to be taxed, but does this Board have any plans in case our millage doesn't pass for our Sheriff's Department? If so, we all know you have the money. I hope the county comes and helps our Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
My name is D.R. Hammond Tree. I'm at 812 South Durand in Jackson, and I'm a candidate for the Jackson College Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today. I'm a big fan. I watch at home on YouTube. Good times. Thank you. Here's my, here's my speech. I'm a first-generation college student, and I start, that's a good one, that's what I live for. I started at the community college level, and then from there on, went to get a BA, two master's degrees, and a PhD. And I'm currently an associate professor and a program director at a fairly large university with about 20,000 students. I understand those struggles and those challenges on the levels of both the student and an administrator and a teacher. These are things I can provide as a Jackson College trustee. Policy and practices and how they affect our communities is the work I've chosen to do for both my career and what I serve and volunteer for, for this community. My education, my profession speak to these causes. I serve on five city commissions, one county board, and an area nonprofit. I think I'm made for this in some ways. This speaks to, the education also speaks to the lived experience as a member of this community and these commissions I'm on, and informs and reminds me that I can be of service to the benefit of the city, the county, and otherwise, and especially for the college. What I care about after that preamble, when it comes to the college, improvement, reform, and the good kind of change. I have the knowledge, the education and the background to know the mechanisms of public service, and I look at Jackson College as a, as a public institution. It has a lot in common with the challenges faced on this Board, challenges the library faces, challenges faced in the city, and so on and so forth. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. The institutional and the academic experience, I understand the depths and policies. I'm not articulating them as much as I want to, but I do understand them. I like having those conversations. I want to see the community in this college flourish. At the end of the day, I want there to be a community college for this community, for the next generation. Thank you for your time, everyone.
In regards to the Sheriff's Millage that's coming up, I just want to remind everybody, among the many things that we all get to vote on this year, and all the school board, all the school board things, races that are going on, I was just looking these up today. In 2022, Napoleon Schools had a, I think, a shooting threat. 2022 Columbia Central, 2022 Northwest had a bomb threat, 2020, sorry, 2023 Northwest also had a shooting threat. September of '24, sorry, September 24 Western and 100 other schools received online threats. August of '24, Vandercook and JC were both shut down because of a shooting incident nearby. September of '24, Hanover, Hanover Horton has already had threats. March of '24, JPS and then specifically J-HI both had threats. And September of '24, Lumen Christie has already had threats. I think it's important to remember, obviously, the kids are the future. I don't think we can emphasize that enough. I know it's been said that if the millages not go through, that, you know, the sheriff will have to cut down, basically, essentially, basically, a shift of officers, and I'm just wondering which, which school districts will not have someone responding for their bomb threats or their shooting threats? We have school liaisons for Hanover, Vandercook, Northwest, and Western. Which, which ones of those will be cut out? I think it's very important that we, that there is no, sorry, there's no shift that we cannot have sheriffs, that we can have sheriffs missing. They're over the entire county. How are, how are you going to respond to the parents of the students of these schools that are under your jurisdictions if in the end, the millages not go through, and you look at Sheriff Shutey and say, "We thank you for your dedication. We know full well you could have gone to a higher-paying county anywhere. We thank you for your dedication, but we're going to have to have you fire however many people." And then you're going to have to go to these schools and tell these families, "We're not going to have, we're not going to have officers that are going to, or sheriffs that are going to be able to respond to these threats." I, I just think it's really important. I realize JPS does, they're in the city, so they have the, they have the police department, but these all, these school districts.
30 seconds.
Thank you. These school districts do not. They have the sheriffs. And I'm assuming most, if not all of you, have kids. Looking at you, I'm guessing some of you have grandkids. I'm not going to go any higher than that. But consider, consider deeply, it's the kids that are going to be affected in the long run. Thank you very much.
Good evening, John Wilson, 1045 South Durand Street. Recently, on a public, local podcast, one of our Commissioners stated during the interview that if the jail millage were not to pass, then it would be the voters' fault to defund the police. Yet, it's been stated over and over from the Board that if the millage does not pass, it will be the Board who will cut over $1 million from the Sheriff's Department for Road Patrol and its corrections officers. So it is not the voters. If they voted no on the millage, it would not be them defunding the police. It would be this Board. We have one commitment from one Board member here tonight, that if the millage did not pass, and it did go to the Board for cuts to the Sheriff's Department, he would vote no for those cuts. That's one Commissioner. Alls we need is four more. So if this millage did not pass, then five Commissioners could say, "No, we are not going to cut the Sheriff's Department. We have money to fund Road Patrol and the corrections officer. We have the money to fund them today, and we have the money to fund them tomorrow." I've been up here enough to discuss where that money's at. I don't need to repeat that, but I will anyways. $9 million reserve fund, and growing. Again, that could cover the cost for the Sheriff's Department rather than putting it on your plates to make the decision to cut the Road Patrol and the corrections officers. I don't think any of, I don't think you will. Now, it's a roll of the dice in case that millage doesn't pass, but I just don't think, I don't see how any of you could say, "We're going to cut over $1 million from the Sheriff's Department." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Versilla Hart, and I'm here as a resident tonight. It appears ARPA funding is being spent on projects that, that stated on your minutes tonight. I would encourage this Board to move the dollars in the proposed line items that would receive ARPA money, ARPA funds being allotted, allotted to those to maintain our county's public safety concerns in our community. So what I'm saying is, if you're, when you're spending your ARPA funds, you have a line item in your budget, I would like those line item numbers to be moved into public safety to cover some expenses for our public safety. Thank you.
Good evening, Brenda Humphrey from Summit Township. I'm here to encourage people to vote yes on the millage for, on the police department, for the Sheriff's Department. It's a, it is a safety issue. It's not about remodeling the building even though it needs it. If it, two gentlemen spoke about the library and about the college. I would say our funds need to go to safety over that. As far as the library, maybe we have too many branches open. There's 13 plus a bookmobile. Are they being utilized to their full potential? Again, it's safety. If we lose 12 deputies, and we know, when we call 911 in the night, you might not get anybody to show up. So again, and I'm also, we're begging you, please, if it does not go through, would you please find the funds somewhere else instead of taking it from the sheriffs? Thank you very much.
Fred Trexler. I'm a precinct delegate in Summit Township. For something that is as important as operating the jail, which we're required to do, and operating the Sheriff's Department, which we need, and people have spoken about the safety issues, for something as important as that, it should not be up to the voters to pass a millage. That should be part of the county Commissioners' budget for Jackson County, and it should be built into your budget. Yes, a new jail, that's appropriate for the voters to approve a millage, but to operate the jail, no. That should be part of your regular budget, just like all the other line items of your budget. And if the millage doesn't pass, you still have time before the December tax bills go out to add it as part of your Jackson County millage. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is John Kane. I've been in Summit Township over 21 years now. At the last meeting, I was very glad to hear Commissioner Kennedy say that you're in support of the sheriffs. I am too. I think we're extraordinarily blessed to have Sheriff Shutey, Officer Simpson, and the whole crew that we have. They're outstanding human beings, outstanding public servants, and I'm here because I'm really concerned about what I've been hearing about the possibility of losing a significant part of their staff. We were not only told that you support the sheriffs, but that we should all come together in our support of the sheriffs, and I agree with that as well. What I want to know is what does that mean as a practical matter, that you support the sheriffs? What is it you're doing to get this millage passed? What steps are you taking to work together with the many volunteers, those of us in the community who also support the sheriffs? I believe communication is a key component of leadership, and I haven't heard or seen much communication on this extremely important issue. It took me by surprise. I've talked to business leaders in downtown Jackson about this issue. They had no idea that the millage is on the ballot or what it's about, and when they found out it could lead to, as Sheriff Shutey indicated, cutting 12 sheriffs, they were appalled. And I think that's going to be the reaction of a lot of people if they did receive the communication they need on this important issue. We all know that when voters go to the poll and they see a millage that they don't know what it's about, they're not going to vote for it. Who wants new taxes? They see jail, they think, "Oh, jail, we already turned this down twice, not going to vote for that." They don't realize that the jail has to stay open and the sheriffs are going to have to go, and I think it's important to get that point across. I was out at the Rec League soccer fields this Saturday. There was a candidate for the Jackson Public School Board out there, walking around handing out flyers, introducing himself to families. I'm not saying you guys have to do that, but he reached hundreds, probably thousands of voters in Jackson County, just handing out flyers. Not a lot of money, it's not a lot of time, you've got people here who would volunteer to do that if you provided the resources, gave them the support that we talked about. So you've got other communication networks, Chamber of Commerce. I don't see any flyers in the windows of businesses downtown explaining what's going on with this millage, that the police could be defunded if they don't pass it, if we don't pass it. You can blame the voters, but you can't blame them for not doing something they don't know anything about, right? So I think it's incumbent on you.
30 seconds, sir.
I think it's incumbent on the leadership to show some leadership and communicate with the public on this important issue. Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Davis, live here in the city. There's been a lot of talk about the jail millage for a couple of years now. One thing that I find, quite frankly, embarrassing for our community is that across the state, across the country, agencies are begging people to join their agency. They're paying for the police academy. They're also paying a salary while you attend the police academy. They are desperately recruiting law enforcement officers, and our community is talking about laying off law enforcement officers. I just think that's embarrassing, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
My name is Mary Miller, and on the sheriff thing, I think that this Board of Commissioners has known that this was going to expire at some point for several years, and I haven't seen anything, not all of you, the ones that have been on here, have come forward to set any kind of funds aside for this. I think you all should be ashamed of yourselves. And now it's come due. Now you want the taxpayer to pay for it. We have a lot of older people, and you say it's only $130. Hopefully, your home goes, valuation goes up every year. When that happens, that 130 now could be 150. Then it could go up to 170. People just can't afford it anymore. And this is something that should be provided to us, and you guys are making us pay for it all, instead of some of it coming from you. That's all I got to say.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special committee meetings tonight. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Do you have a motion and support? Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent calendar. Entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Have a motion and support for the consent calendar. Any items for removal? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
It is posted.
Thank you. Standing Committee Public Safety and Transportation chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items tonight. The first would be item 13A District Court Mental Health Court Grant. We have Mr. Burns here tonight. I would ask if he would approach the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you want to present something first, and then we can ask questions, if you prepared anything, or if not, we can.
So I don't have anything new to specifically present.
Okay.
I'll definitely have question, answer questions if there's any.
Okay, I'll, I'll lead off and, and then other Commissioners. Okay, I'll lead off and then other commissioners or committee members can ask their questions. The biggest thing for me is when we were presented the grant during the Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting, it was to establish the mental health court was the way we took it. Then I saw a request come across that an employee inside the courts is going to receive a $10,000, $10,150 stipend. So my first and foremost question is, is that in addition to his salary? Or is that to offset administrative costs? In other words, of his $99,000 salary, is the county going to pay 89 and this grant money will pay 10 of it? That would be my first question to you because this wasn't presented in the committee meeting.
And so this is not, this was not an FTE. And so was my understanding with how, this is only the second time I've done a stipend. And when I have done it before, under the, oh, what was it? The automatic set aside grant, state grant, that that was an automatic and that when I communicated and worked with Human Resources on that, it was, I was informed that that was not a board thing that I needed to come to. For this, this is above and beyond. We initially put in for a position request with the grant. And that part of it, because this is a planning grant, it was the funding that was originally requested of $156,000 was not granted. That's where it came in, the $46,000 here. If it was a position, we come to the board. That's board policy. That's a standard. It comes to the board for approval with that. This is above and beyond the work that the deputy court administrator already is doing to then initiate, evaluate if this is a feasibility of the court to be able to do, which is completely different than the current job description that he has.
So for clarity's sake, this $10,150 is in addition to his $99,000 salary?
Correct.
Some change? Okay. So one second, I'll get right to you, Commissioner Bear. My next question would be, you're talking about additional duties, additional responsibilities. Are those additional duties and those additional responsibilities going to be done outside of the regular work hour days that the individuals are already doing? And if so, how are you going to track that?
So a couple of things. It's a salaried employee anyways. So generally, we are paid for the job often. And I know my management staff work far more than the normal 40 hours. This is above and beyond. We've already spoken. He is planning on coming in early. There are some weekend things that he is needing to do with that anticipating. This is above and beyond the traditional 40 hours. And again, I say loosely 40 hours because they're already working over 40 hours in a normal work week already. Tracking it is, I know when he's here. I'm often here early. He is planning to be here early as well. And that's part of my job as the manager to oversee that and to be fiscally responsible with what we're, and to have the job done. We've been very clear and outlined what the tangible and the outcomes are supposed to and expected for this additional assignment.
Okay, I have a few more questions, but I'm going to open it up to other committee members. I'm going to go to Commissioner Bear first and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Barry on the floor.
Be aware, Commissioner Kennedy, that this is, the floor is open to all nine of us right now, sir, not just your committee. This is not a special meeting. This is a general meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So you have to recognize all commissioners, sir.
That's fine. I'm reading that it's a standing committee meeting. Okay. All right. We've got two commissioners regardless whether they're committee members or not. And if there's other commissioners that want to ask questions or comment, I'll get to them too. Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman Kennedy. Jeremy, you stated that these services are above and beyond. But I got a copy of the job description for the district court administrator. And essential functions, number four, responsible for management and oversight of all court grants, including the Community Corrections Grant and Mental Health Court Grant.
Correct.
These are, based on this job description, those responsibilities are already in the job description. So I don't, I'm not clear on how this is above and beyond. It's not above and beyond their job description. You'd mentioned hours worked. I always worked in the private sector. Hourly people, people that you, your staff that you pay by the hour. You know, they punch a clock or they keep track of the hours they worked and they work 40.
I'm familiar.
I was always professional staff. When you're professional staff and you get paid a salary, there's no such thing as a 40-hour work week.
Correct.
You do the work that is necessary to get the job done. And if I could do most of my stuff in 50 hours, that was a good week. 60 hours was not uncommon. So if you're on a salary, no. I don't support getting extra money for what's already in the job description, even if it takes more than 40 hours a week. Professional staff are just expected to do that. That's part of the professional job.
Thank you, Commissioner Bear. I don't think there was a question. That was just a statement, correct? Yes? Did you have any questions?
Okay, so the real statement is, can you explain, can you explain better how, what your logic is that this is above and beyond? And explain your logic how this is extra hours? The deserving of extra money?
Yes. So management and oversight is making sure overall that the, the program and operation is completed, is managed. This because initially, this is, this is day-to-day operation and function components of rebuilding this grant. So specifically developing and coordinating and the creation and implementation of the mental health, collaborating with the judges, identifying and coordinating the stakeholders. A lot of this, part of this job description is the overall maintenance after the program is up and running. It is inappropriate for department heads and upper managers to all the time be doing day-to-day, I'm going to say somewhat line work operation because of the detailness of it. Our job is to oversee it. And so because, that was not the initial plan when we put that out there. But I don't have staff that has the, the ability right now other than Mr. Dace, that I have asked him to and Judge Goustery has, the chief judge Goustery has requested for him to do this, above and beyond, that is more of the detail building operation of it. Overall management is completely different than what we are asking Mr. Dace to do in this capacity, which is why we are seeking this additional side stipend.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my first question was already asked. So I guess my last question is, so if we're moving 10,000, round figure $10,000 of this grant money to feed the stipend, what, are we going to then have to cut other areas or plans to do this?
No. So when we, when we were told what the state approved for this, and again, we haven't, we haven't accepted it at all yet. That's part of what this is for. When we received the approval from the state, we had to go back in and real, allocate or budget the components. Of the $48,000, we're looking at only about that $10,000 round number for administrative, professional, hands-on management of it and operation of it. The rest of it is utilizing services for the clients to go through. The rest of it is some supplies and then we have training.
So all our other plans will continue? It's not going to change anything?
Correct.
Okay. All right, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
And then I, can I comment real quick on the request on the accountability? Mr. Dace reminded me, monthly for the reimbursement of that, we have to submit to the state what the work was completed for then the reimbursement of that, for the specific components.
I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Willis, but on that point, just because I've been through something similar like, similar to this on a township board, where people claim they had extra duties, but magically those extra duties got done during the regular workday. So my question on accountability is that when these happen, that it's being documented, that it's happened outside the regular workday. It's in addition to the job. Because that's what you're asking for. Here is what it sounds like to me.
Yes. Now, there are times that there's going to be training during the, during the day.
Sure.
But Mr. Dace also has other jobs that he needs to do. He has, that will also be done outside of those that he normally would have done, he would have been doing during the day.
Okay. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you. My question to you is simple. I think, I think I understand the, the job and the expansion of it, but just help me clarify that. For example, me being a city salary employee, I do understand how things change. So I started out, I'm a director at Montlough King Community Center. That's my job description. But a position opens downtown that they need or they feel I would be to use. So they compensate me because my job description changes at that point. Still had King Center for a while, but because I'm doing some neighborhood liaison work, still 40 hours, it's expanded with those job duties initially included. So is that kind of the same thing that you're saying?
That is how we are seeing this, yes. We do not feel like this is double dipping. We feel like this is clearly in addition to the role of what Mr. Dace does in a, in a daily, weekly function. And he does have the experience and the ability to do this. And so this is above and beyond.
Okay. And it's not affecting our contribution to the grant?
Correct. This is 100% paid-for oversight by, by the state grant.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you. Good evening, Jeremy. If the caseload at the court goes down 50%, are you guys expecting to take a 50% pay cut?
So we are 11% above in our criminal cases right now, which I reported earlier this month. The work still needs to be done. And the court has taken significant pay cuts over the year, years. And so we have reduced staff based on the reduction of.
You've reduced staff, yes. But if you do it on a percentage basis, who's going to take, if we lose a state-funded program, are you expect to take a pay cut because we lost a grand funded program?
If we lost the state, if we lost the state funding program, we don't have the program because that's not the responsibility of, of the commissioners or the boards.
But it's just the same as you're saying. We, we're doing this new program, so we need more money.
Because there's more work, yes.
Okay, if you lose a program, you expect to lose money because you're doing less work.
In this case, this would be the case with Mr. Dace, yes, because he would not be doing that work.
I, I just don't see it that way. You guys are paid to run the court system. And it's going to have slow time, busy times. It all averages out. I, I don't see this as a bonus situation. You're salaried? Are you salaried?
Yes, I am, yes.
I definitely don't see this as a bonus situation. So.
Any other commissioner comments? Now, I have one last thing. Seems that back in August of 2018, this deputy position was created. And at that time, that was yourself. And that was to train for the outgoing individual. And the understanding was that once you were training, you stepped up and took the reins, that that assistant position would dissolve. It doesn't look like that's happened. It looks like we've taken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the chief probation officer effectively became the deputy administrator. Am I correct in that?
So I was not part of what was discussed to the board at that point. I didn't even know I was going to be in this position in August of 18. I came on in October of 18. However, after the transition, I came to this board with a reorganization plan to, because there is strength in having the ability of a succession plan and having the ability of somebody else secondarily to come up. We just did that with the IT department a couple of years ago. We have done that across the county where there is justification and support for succession planning. And so that was brought before this board.
Okay. That was a substantial pay increase.
It was budget, it was actually budget positive when I brought it to the board with the reorganization.
Let me word it this way. The pay increase for that individual in that position increased substantially from the former role.
I don't have that information from, it stands, it stands to region.
So my point is that individual is being compensated fairly, especially when you consider the median income of Jackson County. You know, 100 grand is not chump change in Jackson. It's a, it's a good living. So I personally have a very hard time. I tend to agree with Commissioner Bear that a salary is a salary. The list of the job duties are here, including your own, which specifically for your job category is responsible for management and oversight of all court grants, including the Community Corrections Grant and the Mental Health Court Grant. Applies for new grants and grant renewals as needed. So to pass that on to another individual and say that's new added duties, respectfully, I don't see it that way. I see that as duties that were already listed in the job function that you have, quite frankly. So I hate to turn away grant money and not create, recreate this court, but past practices from previous administration did not handle it this way. Like I said, the previous way was if they were to take money out of the grant to go to the additional duties, they then took it out of the budget and refunded it back to the general fund of the county. With everything we're facing right now, you've heard umpteen people up here about the sheriff. And I'm not going to get into all that because we all know that court and sheriff budget is different money. But every penny we spend up here, we have to be good stewards of it. So I'm not going to be in support of the way this is set up. I'm just not. So, thank you.
So does that mean you're not going to call for a vote, sir, even though it came out of your committee?
You're the chairman, so you can call for a vote.
Approve the acceptance of a planning grant from the State Court Administrator's office in the amount of $46,859 for the development of the mental health court system. I would so move. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Do I have a discussion?
We've had enough discussion, I believe, on this issue.
A motion and support and we can't discuss? I have a question.
You had the floor. You had the floor for the last 25 minutes, sir.
I understand, but I have a question for administration.
Go ahead.
Okay. Administrator, if this is approved, would that stipend still need to be brought in front of this board to be issued?
We're talking about district court here. You would be approving the grant or the program. And the court controls wages of their employees there. The only caveat to that is if the board approves a line item budget, the court is required to follow each and every line item. They can't deviate from that. We generally don't do that. We prefer, approve budgets by category. So we'll have a salary line that says 3.2 million for district court. And then they spend that money for their employees and how they see fit, frankly.
Motion to amend?
Listening. Listening.
My motion to amend would be to add to the end of the motion Chairman Shotwell made, the words, with the stipulation that no stipend will be given to any employee for doing this work.
Support.
We have an amended, supported motion.
May the clerk ask for that to be repeated?
Could you repeat it?
Would you like me to write it?
No, I'd like you to repeat it, is what I'd like you to do, so the audience could see it and hear it.
Repeat it. At the end of his motion, add the words, with the stipulation that no staff get additional pay through a stipend from this grant.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, according to clarification, so the vote that we're going to do now is to vote to accept the amendment? Is that correct? Okay, thank you, nothing further.
Yes, he does, course, supporter is a member.
Okay.
Okay, to the maker of the motion, just to confirm this is correct. The addition is with the words "after court", with the stipulation that no staff get additional stipend from this grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll on the amended, on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Polesky?
No.
Commissioner Willis?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Baer?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
No.
The amendment passed? Well, excuse me.
No.
The amendment did not pass.
We have a tie.
We have a tie.
Thought it was four to three.
No, it's four, four.
I missed somebody then.
Four, four. When it's tied, when it's tied, it fails. Now, we're to the original motion.
Approve the acceptance of a planning grant from the State Court Administrator's Office in the amount of $46,859 for the development of a mental health court. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
No.
Commissioner Polesky?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Baer?
No.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Passes.
Commissioner Kennedy, your next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. The next item is the Drain Commissioner Report. I don't know if Mr. Snyder is here tonight. Is he?
He is not.
So, we've had a second opportunity to read that. It was in committee. I guess I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Support.
You have a motion in support? Can you post the vote, Madam Clerk?
It is posted. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
That concludes business, Mr. Chair.
Standing Committee General Government chaired by Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have appointments, many appointments. Materials Management Plan Committee. Term expires 10 of 29. The applicant for, as a solid waste disposal facility operator applicant was Jim Grant. Committee recommended Jim Grant. I'll make that a motion.
Any nominations from the floor?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
I'm nominating myself. I am eminently qualified for this position.
I don't believe you're a solid waste disposal facility operator, sir. You do not manage one of those businesses.
I am a program manager. You don't have to operate the facility to manage the program. Program management is what I did for years. Multi-million dollar project.
I understand that, but I'm telling you-
Many facilities, over time, the total program.
I will call you out of order at this time, Commissioner Baer. This is not a position for you to be nominated for. It's a dedicated position that has to have a specific job title with it, sir.
How many wastewater treatment points have you operated?
Absolutely none. That's why I'm not, that's why I'm not applying as the operator.
I'm not applying as an operator either.
Any other nominations from the floor?
For which position?
I'm dealing with the first one Commissioner Duckham gave me, solid waste disposal facility operator. Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I got my Duckham.
Yes.
No, you have to pick one of the two.
Oh, okay.
Grant or, which one?
Grant.
There's only one, Commissioner Chairman.
We'll keep going.
Okay, Commissioner Polesky?
Grant.
Commissioner Willis?
Grant.
Commissioner Williams?
Grant.
Commissioner Baer?
Jim Grant.
Commissioner Walls?
Grant.
Shotwell?
Grant.
I'll be Grant too there, Madam.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
Second position on this committee, a representative of a haller. We have Shalonda, Sheldon Messner, Curtis Comet, Steve Walters. Committee recommended Sheldon Messner. I would forward that.
Any other nominations from the floor?
I'd nominate Curtis Comet.
Any other nom, any other nominations from the floor? We have Sheldon Messner and Curtis Comet to vote on. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Polesky?
Messner.
Commissioner Willis?
Messner.
Commissioner Williams?
Messner.
Commissioner Baer?
Curtis Comet.
Commissioner Walls?
Messner.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Comet.
Commissioner Duckham?
Messner.
Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman Shotwell?
Messner.
Messner passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckham?
Next position is material recovery facility operator. We do not have an applicant for that at this time. Next position is a compost facility operator. We do not have a applicant at this time. Next up is waste division reuse and reduction facility operator. Steve Noble was the applicant. Steve Noble was the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Environmental Interest Group. Jane Trivero Myers was an applicant, and she is also the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Elected official of the county. We have two applicants, Tony Baer, Steve Shotwell. Committee recommendation was Steve Shotwell.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none? What's that?
Roll call vote.
You have to nominate yourself if you want a roll call vote.
Only one nomination right now, sir. Are you nominating Tony Baer?
I'm nominating, yeah, I'm nominating myself.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Willis?
Shotwell.
Commissioner Williams?
Shotwell.
Commissioner Baer?
Baer.
Commissioner Walls?
Shotwell.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Shotwell.
Commissioner Duckham?
Shotwell.
Commissioner Polesky?
Shotwell.
Chairman Shotwell?
Shotwell.
Shotwell passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a position for elected official of a township. We do not have an applicant for that at this time. Another elected official of a city or village, we do not have an applicant for that at this time. Next, we have a representative of a business that generates and managed material. We do not have an applicant for that at this time. Region Two Planning Commission Representative, we do not have an applicant for that at this time. So we'll have to re-advertise. That's it for material management plan. Next up, we have land bank authority. Term expires 10 of 28. We, Commissioner position, Darius Williams is the current member. Darius Williams has applied. Darius Williams was the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Duckham?
Next up, committee, city representative. John Willis is the current member. Advocate John Willis is the only applicant there. And recommendation, recommendation from the committee, committee was John Willis.
Any, any, I believe that's a dedicated seat.
Yes, sir.
To concur with John Willis, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Township representative, Pete Jansik is the current member. Pete Jansik applied, and Pete Jansik was the committee recommendation.
That's a dedicated position to that title. All in favor, may I say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried, Commissioner Duckham?
One more position for land bank, Mr. Chair, would be public member, construction industry. Tim Golding was the current member. We have no applicant at this time. He did not reapply.
Thank you, sir.
We'll go on to Employee Retirement System Board. General position appointed by the Board of Commission. It's a vacant position. We have an applicant of Danielle Paquette. And Danielle Paquette was the committee recommendation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Duckham. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Polesky, Commissioner Polesky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have openings on the Sanitary Code Board of Appeals for a contractor alternate and for a well driller alternate. Both of those positions are vacant at the present time, and we have had no applicants. Without any nominations from the floor, I'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, sir.
We have an opening on the Department on Aging Advisory Council for a public member. The term expires December of 2025, currently vacant. We've had an applicant, Shanice Davenport, and she is the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Polesky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all for this evening.
The Board of Commissioners at this time have no unfinished business to come before the board. Is there any new business to come before the board? We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment, public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. It may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment is open. Any public comment? Any public comment, second time? No public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments? See, Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, just a little last minute on the draw there, but I just thank you to the commissioners for your vote of confidence in me to continue to serve in the land bank. As I continue to say, as I, I'm sure I can speak for all commissioners as we stand in support of our Sheriff's Department and willing to do what is necessary to make sure that our community is educated on the importance of the passage of this millage. Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to speak on the jail operations millage that is on the ballot. I'm going to speak directly to a couple of comments that were made tonight. First was a concern about school liaison officers at districts. Districts that have those are paying for them. Or in the case of Michigan Center in East Jackson, Leoni Township and the school district are each paying for that. So those types of positions would not be eliminated, no matter how the vote goes, because they currently have a funding structure. The second thing is what is so crucial, what people need to understand, and I hear so many people during public comment, and I know they're not grasping it, and I've tried my best, I've gone on podcasts, I've spoke on the news. This is essentially a renewal. So, 20-plus years ago, there was an overcrowding problem at Wesley Street. And the commission then, I was a much younger man then, was not on this board, made the decision to build a new facility. And inside that request, the operations of that facility were included in it for 20 years. So, when that expired, those operations fund expired. This ask is only .25. It's only the portion of that millage that was specifically for operations. I heard an individual out there tonight get confused and think it was $130 on their tax bill. It's not. It's $12.50 for every $100,000 that you purchased your home for. That's how little of the ask was, okay? I think they got confused with the library millage. That ask would be that high. But this jail operations millage is not. So, when I say it's a renewal, it legitimately is, it really is. And our Sheriff's Department needs it, flat out. So, I ask the community to really look into it, weigh the facts, understand it. I am available, you can call me anytime, 517-581-1091. You can email me, I will meet with you in person, and I will give you the facts. Thank you.
Any, Commissioner Baer?
Thank you. Sure, everybody, let's not talk about what's going to happen if the jail millage doesn't pass. Let's get out and work to make sure it does. Then all these hypothetical problems will never come about. So talk to your neighbors, get on the radio, talk shows, call and make the comment to get this jail millage passed. Then we never have to have these conversations later about what, what are the consequences. Pass it.
Commissioner Walls?
Thank you. I too have heard several comments. I've received emails and things. And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone on this board because I know personally that they're out there doing their job. I myself attend 15 meetings a month. I have five townships. I go to all those townships. I speak at the senior center. And I know that these gentlemen are doing the same. Some of them have been there with me. Some of them have been there with me. So what I would like to say is thank you to this board of commissioners. And for any of you who have questions, please reach out to us. I've spoken to several members that I see sitting out in this audience at this moment and said to them, reach out, and they have. And I think I've given fair and honest answers. So please, reach out to your commissioner because they are out there doing the work. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, I need a motion to go into closed session.
It's all moved.
In accordance with MCL 15.268, union negotiations to be discussed. I have, I have a motion. Did I hear a support?
Support.
I have a support. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Baer?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Polesky?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Passes.